I got it. All right, good afternoon to the meeting number five, February 12th, 2024. Alyssa, please do the presiding.
In compliance with Chapter 231, a public law of 1975, notice of this meeting to be held at the Criminal Justice Building, 61 Main Street, South River, has been published in the Home News Tribune on January 5th, 2024, posted on the municipal building bulletin board, the Borough website, the front door of the Criminal Justice Building at 61 Main Street, South River.
Roll call.
Mayor Gindy.
Here.
Councilwoman Ballas.
Here.
Councilman Seula.
Here.
Councilman DeZemian.
Here.
Councilman Kretchinsky.
Here.
Councilman Krenzel.
Here.
Council President Olivera.
Here.
Please rise for the salute to the flag.
(inaudible) of the United States of America, and to the God which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Stay standing for a moment, silence. Thank you, maybe seated. We do have a presentation today. Chief Tenenigan, at the last council meeting, we spoke briefly about a crime watch. If you could, please.
Good evening, everyone. And I won't hold it against you, you were about to say Chief Ibe.
I was.[87.57][87.57](laughter) Really was. I was thinking of him.
At the last council meeting, we spoke about how police officers throughout this country, not only in the state, are asked to do more with less people. So now, more than ever, the Borough of South River, our police department, needs the community's help to make your neighborhood safer. So today, I bring before you Officer Stone. She's assigned to our Special Operations Unit. She's our community policing officer. She's going to be talking a little bit about our Neighborhood Watch program. It's good that she's here today because not only is she talking about like how the Neighborhood Watch program brings the community together, but it's also good to tie a face with the program. So, without further ado.
Thank you, Chief. Good evening, everyone, mayor, council. My name is Officer Stone. I'm currently assigned to the department's Community Policing Division, and part of my job is to find ways to bridge the gap between our community and law enforcement. Many moons ago, the Borough had implemented the Neighborhood Watch program, and from my understanding, it was successful. They were able to catch a burglar from one of the residents being watchful over the street that she lived on. This was, I'm not sure what year this was, many moons ago, but we have some new fresh faces in the department, myself included, and our division's always looking for new ways, like I said, to build that relationship with our community. So Neighborhood Watch is exactly what it sounds like. It's a group of people living in the same area who want to make their neighborhood safer by working together with local law enforcement. There's many ways that this program will benefit the community. It will allow neighbors to get to know one another and watch out for each other, which improves neighborhood security and safety. And at these meetings, we are looking to host them quarterly with the public. It will be open to all residents of South River. It will be hosted by two officers, at least mainly from my division. We'll also bring on officers from the Detective Bureau, and we're going to talk about the current crime trends. Everybody knows we've had a rash of these catalytic converter thefts in town. We've probably handled at least 30 reports alone over the last 10 months, I would say. So we're going to educate our residents in obviously the current crime trends. We're also going to have trainings, what to look for, home safe assessments, things that they could do to protect their own home, and to keep out, obviously, a watchful eye for their neighbors and their neighbors' kids. Also with that, there will be a small cost incurred at these meetings. Everyone loves refreshments. We want people to come to these meetings. I have it planned out for you. I have a copy. The chief also has a copy, if you'd like to see it. In addition to these meetings, we're looking to also post signs. We have 15 locations that we have determined to place these signs throughout the community. Also, I have here listed for you, if you take a look at, another just additional small cost per sign, and these signs are nationally recognized. It lets people know that are coming into town, even residents that are committing crimes, that we have community members that are going to be watchful, and they are going to be reporting anything suspicious to the police department. Any questions?
Questions whatsoever?
So I have a total estimated cost, just for, like I said, the meetings that we're going to be hosting quarterly, the signage that we'd like to post, and without this program, it will not function without the residents' participation.
Where will the meetings be held at?
We are looking to host them right here in the courtroom, as long as the court schedule is clear. They won't have court that evening. I've already spoken with the court administrator. She has no problem with us hosting the meetings here. If we get a large response where this room will be congested, another location will be determined prior to that meeting, and we will be posting, obviously, on social media.
Okay. I'm sure we can even post on 35.
Like Officer Stone said, I mean, it's community-driven, so we need the involvement of all the people that live in this town. So there are seven right up here. You should all be here. You know, we can tackle issues such as, I hear people are coming up here because of speeding. You know, there's a mockery that everyone thinks that there's 32 cops and we're all working at one time. No, that's not the case. You know, we have speeding issues. We have catalytic converter thefts. We have the issue going on Main Street right now. We have people parking the wrong way on the street. We have people parking on the curb. You know, those are just the small little things that we have that we try to take care of, but we need the community's help to make this town safer. And if we don't get that, then, you know, it's, we can complain all day long, but if you're not involved, it's not going to solve the problem. Anybody have any questions? Good job.
Thank you.
Nice work. Nice work. Agenda session, we're going to be talking about all first readings. No, first.
Good night.
All right, for first reading, we have, we have three first readings, one on wreckers, one on Board of Commissions, and the other one on vehicles and traffic. The wreckers, something that Council President and myself have been working on. We are looking to expand the list from six to 10 wreckers. The reason being is, as you know, most of our issues now are involving a lot of 18-wheelers, trailers, box trucks, and most of these record, or most of these towing companies that happen to be on the list as we speak today are not capable of actually pulling this. So we wanted to raise the number to 10, giving, you know, a higher stake with wreckers to be part of our list. Board of Commissions, I believe that is, Andrea, is that yours?
The Board of Commissions, that is just to repeal the municipal alliance.
All right, then the last one is the vehicles and traffic on Blue Acres. The issue we have today is we have several Blue Acre properties in town, and unfortunately, a lot of residents, a lot of commercial, a lot of people feel that they could park on these, on these properties, thinking it's okay. Blue Acres belongs to the DEP, and their exact instructions is that we are to tow and ticket and get the cars off their property. For us to do that, we have to pass an ordinance of that nature. So we will be talking about it after first reading, next month, next meeting for the second reading. Anybody who likes to speak on it, you're more than welcome to. We will now be going into second reading. Alyssa.
Ordinance 2024-1, ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank for calendar year 2024.
What is your motion?
Wave the full reading. Second.
Motion by Councilman Krenzel, second by Council President Olivera. Any questions? Motion.
You have to open it to the public.
I'm sorry, I'm opening it to the public. Anyone else who...
Lisa Byrne, 11 Basset Place, I would just like to say, as a member of the Environmental Commission for the South River, we've had this conversation many times about the Blue Acres property. We appreciate all your efforts.
This is just on the...
This is just for...
This is on ordinance.
No, that's okay.
You'll get time shortly.
Anyone else on public? On ordinance 2024-1?
Did you close the public?
I closed. Motion to close the public? Thank you.
So moved.
Councilman Krenzel, motion, second by Council President Olivera.
Move the ordinance?
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Seula, seconded by Councilwoman Ballas.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Seula?
Yes.
Councilman DeZemian?
Yes.
Councilman Kretchinsky?
Yes.
Councilman Krenzel?
Yes.
Council President Olivera?
Yes.
Call in favor, move. Alyssa, 2024-2.
Ordinance 2024-2, bond ordinance providing for improvements to various roads appropriating $900,000 therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $199,000 bonds and notes to finance a portion of the costs thereof, authorized in and by the Borough of South River and the County of Middlesex, New Jersey.
Make a motion, wave the full reading.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Seula, Council President Olivera, second. What do you from the public?
Richard Byrne, 11 Basset Place, I know in prior years, we had limited our road infrastructure upgrades to just what the NJDOT grants were, and it just, it warmed my heart to see that now we're actually pulling Borough funds in to supplement that, and these are welcome upgrades to our road infrastructure, and I thank you for taking this action.
Anyone else from public? First call? Second call? Third call?
Make a motion to close.
Councilman Seula?
Second.
Second by Councilman Krenzel. I have a motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Ballas, seconded by Councilman Seula.
Councilwoman Ballas? Councilman Seula?
Yes.
Councilman DeZemian?
Yes.
Councilman Krenzel?
Yes.
Councilman Kretchinsky?
Yes.
Council President Olivera?
Yes.
Alyssa, 2024-3.
Ordinance 2024-3, an ordinance of the Borough of South River, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending the Borough Code of the Borough of South River so as to amend Chapter 258 entitled Property Maintenance.
Wave the full reading.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Krenzel, seconded by Councilwoman Ballas.
Mayor, there is an amendment to this ordinance.
Yes, I was going to say, okay.
So I would like to open it up to discussion, if possible.
So be.
Second.
So with this ordinance, one of the things that was brought up, and Councilman Krenzel, I don't know if you'd like to discuss it, being that this is something you brought up, but when it snows and a vehicle is not able to park in a driveway, we do not want to penalize residents for parking in front of their lawn. So the amendment to this reading would be to allow during snow emergencies, to allow the vehicles to be parked in the front lawn. So with that, I would like to make a motion to have this on the first reading. Correct.
We would need a motion to accept the amendment, and then it would convert this to first reading, and second reading would be next, next meeting. So we would need a motion.
What's your motion for a convert?
Well, before that, just, if I may, it occurred to me, do we want to just limit it to snow emergency, or have any emergency?
Flooding.
Like a flood? Would it be better just to leave it? We know that it'd most likely be in the event of a snow emergency, but suppose that there was any other type of emergency, I can't think of one right off the top of my head, Mr. Kretchinsky said flooding. Should we just remove the word "snow"? I don't know. Your thoughts?
Yeah, I was just gonna suggest we change the wording to say, except in the event of a borough-declared emergency.
Yes. Declared, yeah. Okay.
And then we would, then we would remove the Chapter 193 Vehicles and Traffic article, that provision. I'll send you revised. But, and then if that is acceptable, we'll need a motion to accept the amendment, and then it will convert this to first reading. We'll need a motion for first reading, and it'll go on for second reading next meeting.
I'll make that motion to, first, the first motion concerning the amendment.
Second.
All right, Councilman Krenzel, for the amendment on first, for first motion, sorry, on the second motion by Council President Olivera, that's on the amendment.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Seula?
Yes.
Councilman DeZemian?
Yes.
Councilman Kretchinsky?
Yes.
Councilman Krenzel?
Yes.
Council President Olivera?
Yes.
Now we need a motion.
You know the magic words.
Mayor, I move that council pass ordinance 2024-3 on its first reading by title only, and that the clerk be authorized to publish the same as required by law, with a second reading and public hearing to be held on February 26, 7:00 PM by video conference via Zoom, or in the council chambers of the Criminal Justice Building located at 61 Main Street, South River, New Jersey.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Councilman, Council President Olivera, seconded by Councilman Seula.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilman DeZemian?
Yes.
Councilman Kretchinsky?
Yes.
Councilman Krenzel?
Yes.
Council President Olivera?
Yes.
Alyssa, 2024-4?
Ordinance 2024-4, an ordinance of the Borough of South River, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending the Borough Code of the Borough of South River so as to amend Chapter 193 entitled Vehicles and Traffic.
Make a motion, wave the full reading.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Seula, Councilwoman Ballas, second. Anybody from the public? First call? Second call? Third call?
Make a motion, close public.
Second.
Discussion? Question?
Well, we know we just closed it. Now, now we have to move the ordinance. I so move the ordinance.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Krenzel, seconded by Council President Olivera.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Seula?
Yes.
Councilman DeZemian?
Yes.
Councilman Kretchinsky?
Yes.
Councilman Krenzel?
Yes.
Council President Olivera?
Yes.
Thank you. You're going to first reading. Alyssa, 2024-5.
Ordinance 2024-5, an ordinance of the Borough of South River, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending the Borough Code of the Borough of South River so as to amend Chapter 344 entitled Wreckers.
Mr. Mayor, before we have a motion on this one, I just realized that the ordinance that's in your packet was not the revised ordinance. The revised ordinance also provides a revision to 34417. That revised ordinance adds a letter G, which is the power to require removal of vehicles. It allows the police department to remove vehicles from Blue Acres property. That is the ordinance that should be on first reading, so it should have two sections, 34417 and 34418. I just wanted to make sure that that was clear for everyone, that what you're voting on is the amended ordinance.
Right.
For first reading.
Mayor, I move that council pass ordinance 2024-5 on its first reading by title only, and that the clerk be authorized to publish the same as required by law, with a second reading and public hearing to be held on February 26, 7:00 PM by video conference via Zoom, or in the council chambers of the Criminal Justice Building located at 61 Main Street, South River, New Jersey.
I have a second. Council President Olivera motioned, seconded by Councilman Kretchinsky.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Seula?
Yes.
Councilman DeZemian?
Yes.
Councilman Kretchinsky?
Yes.
Councilman Krenzel?
Yes.
Council President Olivera?
Yes.
Alyssa, 2024-6.
Ordinance 2024-6, an ordinance of the Borough of South River, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending the Borough Code of the Borough of South River so as to amend Chapter 22 entitled Boars, Commissions, and Authorities.
Mayor, I move that council pass ordinance 2024-6 on its first reading by title only, and that the clerk be authorized to publish the same as required by law, with a second reading and public hearing to be held on February 26, 7:00 PM by video conference via Zoom, or in the council chambers of the Criminal Justice Building located at 61 Main Street in South River, New Jersey.
Second.
Motion made by Council President Olivera, seconded by Councilwoman Ballas.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Seula?
Yes.
Councilman DeZemian?
Yes.
Councilman Kretchinsky?
Yes.
Councilman Krenzel?
Yes.
Council President Olivera?
Yes.
Alyssa, 2024-7.
Ordinance 2024-7, an ordinance of the Borough of South River, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending the Borough Code of the Borough of South River so as to amend Chapter 193 entitled Vehicles and Traffic.
Mayor, I move that council pass ordinance 2024-7 on its first reading by title only, and that the clerk be authorized to publish the same as required by law, with a second reading and public hearing to be held on February 26, 7:00 PM by video conference via Zoom, or in the council chambers of the Criminal Justice Building located at 61 Main Street in South River, New Jersey.
Second.
Motion by Council President Olivera, seconded by Councilman Kretchinsky.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Seula?
Yes.
Councilman DeZemian?
Yes.
Councilman Kretchinsky?
Yes.
Councilman Krenzel?
Yes.
Council President Olivera?
Yes.
Thank you. We're going to move to reports. Bruce?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. The 2023 Local Aid Program grant, we are working on that design. The 2023 Local Transportation Projects Grant, we made an application, but I haven't, I don't know of anybody who's heard back from the DOT regarding that yet. The 2024 Local Aid Program, that's a resolution on your agenda tonight. The 2024 Local Aid Transportation Projects, that has a deadline of June 30th, if you should want to make an application. The Electrical Substation, the contractor's doing some testing on the batteries and various relays. And the Stormwater Assistance Grant Program, our survey department is doing some of the locations in the winter while they're able to. And that is it.
Thank you. Any questions? Joe?
Just two items on the agenda. Number one, resolution to purchase two police vehicles through the Educational Service Commission of New Jersey Co-op. This is in, this is in the 2024 budget, and a second resolution is applying for a local recreation grant. So if you remember, at the special meeting, we applied for 75% of the Grikowski All-Inclusive Playground. If we're lucky, this will be the additional money, so we can maybe fund the whole entire playground. So we need the resolution approved first to send down, and hopefully we get it. That's it.
Joe, last year, county was supposedly allocating $75,000 or $70,000 towards Daley's Pond. Did we ever receive that?
Just got notification last week that we got it.
We got it.
Yes.
Thank you.
So we're going to put it in the 2024 budget as a grant.
Excellent. Chief?
Just a couple of things, just, just with Officer Stone, just I implore everyone to get involved in the Neighborhood Watch program. We're going to be putting that out on social media soon, so whenever we have our first meeting, hopefully we'll get a big interest from the community. And the other two things I have is, one, we're still hiring for a school crossing guard, so if anybody's interested in a position as a full-time slash part-time crossing guard, please come down to the Borough Hall and ask for an application. And also, we're still looking for a part-time dispatcher. That is opened up until end of the month, and that's it.
Thank you. Any questions? Page?
Yes, next Monday, President's Day will be closed, there'll be no yard waste pickup, and we're ready for tomorrow. That's all I got.
Thank you. Fire chief?
Mayor and council, we are currently sitting at roughly an average of 50 calls per year. That's a combination of all January's alarms and up to now in February. All apparatus at this point in time are in service and responding. I do want you to make note of, to you as well as the Borough of South River residents, come springtime, come warmer weather, they may see us out there on Main Street, around the industrial area, the warehouses. We're going to start doing what's called pre-planning, different structures, so we have an understanding of the layout of the structure, where different fire department connections are, what pretty much will dictate our strategy and tactics. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Krenzel? Oh, I forgot about Alyssa. I always forget about Alyssa. I know, I'm sorry. Let's go to Alyssa first.
I don't, I don't have anything.
Andrea?
I don't have anything tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Business administrator.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. Last week, we had a pre-bid meeting for the chemical change water treatment plant. We had four contractors at that meeting, so Thursday is the bid, so we expect a good number for that. And the tile yard pumping station was pushed back a week. They will start repairing that next week. And the last thing is, number 107 on your resolutions is the Borough is applying for a AFG FEMA grant for radios for the fire department.
Excellent. Any questions? Now, Councilman Krenzel?
As you heard, we are all set for the storm. Whatever we're going to get at this point in time Monday night, they're not sure how many inches. It's definitely going to be something plowable, so again, get your cars off of the roads so that the plows can come by. I know that the Borough Administrator has written to JCPN-L concerning the lights on the bridge. That belongs to JCPN-L. I see them out there. Nothing seems to be done. If nothing is done in two weeks, perhaps the governing body can send a letter out to them, coming from the mayor and the council, saying, please do something, like your job. You know, because it is dangerous coming down there. I come down there every night, and it is a problem, and it's going to be a problem is, you know, when we change the time. So that's what I would recommend, so that could be discussed at your next agenda meeting, Mr. Mayor. That's all I have.
Councilman Kretchinsky?
Thank you, Mayor. A few things on the Office on Aging. This Friday, they will be closed in honor of President's Day. They have two more meetings for elder law and estate planning on the 21st and the 28th. You should call the Office on Aging to, it's RSVP, so you should call the Office on Aging to reserve yourself a seat. Also, the Middlesex County Office on Aging and Disability Service is the Senior Fraud Prevention Conference on Friday, February 16th, from 10:30 to 1:00 at the East Brunson Community Arts Center on Cranberry Road, and registration is, closes on February 14th of this week at 4:00 PM. What you have to do is contact, well, it's an email contact, it's tinyurl.com/seniorfraud2024 to reserve your reservation. If not, you have any questions, you should call 732-745-3017, and that's for Alicia Ryder. And that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Council President?
So for Parks and Recreation, all of our winter sports are going very well. We're wrapping up with wrestling, basketball, and our competitive cheerleading. For Spring 2024 Registration, we have volleyball, flag football, T-ball, U6, U8 baseball, U8 and U10 softball. We will be offering tennis lessons at the high school facility. We will also be doing Zumba and yoga, so we have a ton of options coming up. Volleyball is also open to adults, so again, we're trying to encompass every age group as possible. Please visit Civic Rec and they'll, you'll be able to get additional information on that. From a budget committee standpoint, we had our first budget meeting last week. We'll be meeting again the week of the nineteenth, I believe, yep, nineteenth, which is next week. So our anticipated budget timeline for this year, we're looking to introduce our budget on March eleventh and adopt the budget on April twenty-second. What we're gonna do in between that we haven't done in a while, but I'm really excited, we're gonna do two public hearings on the budget. So I'm shooting for Saturday, March twenty-third and Saturday, April twentieth. Just need to confirm the dates with our Borough Auditor. And once we have that, we'll be able to finalize and publicize the budget presentations. And this is where the residents will be able to come out, ask questions. We want you guys there, we want you guys asking questions. So again, more details to follow when it comes to that. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman DeZemian?
Thank you, Mayor. The Environmental Commission Committee update. Several members met with the Servile Environmental Commission last week to discuss collaborative efforts they are looking to pursue. They are going to partner with Servile and South Amboy for a regional green fair to be held in the fall at Kennedy Park in Servile. They are also going to participate in the Kennedy Park Cleanup in April in conjunction with Earth Day. And I also attended the Oriental, um, orientation for newly elected municipal officials, which was very good and learned a lot from all the guest speakers that attended there. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ballas?
Yeah, I just have one thing. There will be an open house reception to say thank you and farewell to our retiring library director, Evelina Erb, on Saturday, February twenty-fourth, from one to three P M. at the South River Library at fifty-five Appleby Avenue. They invite everyone to come, so they want you to join the trustees, the friends of the library, and all the staff in honoring Evelina. She really did a tremendous job for our library, and they really will miss her. So that's all I have.
Councilman, uh, Seula?
Thank you. E D C, uh, we had our first meeting and, um, we are in the process of looking for different grants. One grant was found already, um, was turned over to Dawn, our grant writer, to see how qualified we are and if we can apply for that. So the E D C is trying to work on a grant, especially for the Main Street redevelopment and to help out some of the business owners down there. To the chief, thank the officers, we had an issue, um, last week with people knocking on doors. They were not registered with the Police Department or the Borough. The officers came, they handled the situation, and the people were taken out of town, basically. So again, thank the officers for their quick response, and biggest thing is protecting our seniors from, uh, these people knocking on doors. So just extend a thank you. I have right now.
Save my comments till later. We'll be opening the floor to the public. You have ten minutes to speak. Please state your name and address. Anybody from public? Yeah, go ahead.
First thing is, good evening. Today, my name is Ronald Louque, I live at eighty-five Darrell Street. L O U Q U E, all right? Today, I'm not a happy camper. I got a question. When are we gonna do, what we gonna do on, on Virginia Street? Painting, signs, et cetera? It's been two and a half, three months, and nothing has been done. All right?
Age, where do we stand on that?
Well, that's what I wanna know. All right? Thing is, is we're looking at it like, what's going on? What's going on? All right? Second thing, I am the guy that every morning, paced on Facebook, Lord Prayer, the Pledge of Allegiance, and American Creed. That's me. I go on Facebook and I see comments about speeders. Lady got hit, if I'm not mistaken, by the school? I don't know if that's true, I'm just saying. All right? Next one. This is to the Police Department. A young lady a while ago was talking about community. All right? This happened to me. I called the Police Department for a speeder. Okay? Roughly three months ago. Here come the police officer. We're talking, he looks me in the eye, said, you know, this is not an emergency. You should not have called nine one one. We can hand you a ticket. Heard the police officer. Now, my thing is, what I gotta do, wait for somebody to get hit? For it to be an emergency? Think about that. I'm not saying I did right by calling nine one one. I give the police officer right for that. But I really think we need to figure out how we're gonna do this and what we're gonna do. Cause me, I pity the fool who hit my kids. I won't be calling police officer, I'm gonna call the undertaker. That's the way I feel about that. When that lady died on my street, I'm telling you, it hit, never, I still don't know the lady's name, but it hit me right here. I hope that's the way y'all feel about that. Could've been your mama, could've been his mama, could've been her mama, could've been mine. It's just a point, we need to do something about these speeders. Not talk about it. I mean, put a camera up, speeders going twenty-six, the speed limit's twenty-five, take it. Why not? The camera? And why do we have, uh, these things we put in the cop car to see what the speed is?
You mean speed, speed traps?
Radar?
I mean, the radars.
Cause there's a police officer that's behind that radar watching.
But the cameras not legal.
No, there's nobody there.
And why do other people do that?
That was a couple of years ago.
Other states?
Other states.
Other states.
All right.
Just New Jersey.
That's exactly what you just said. It's New Jersey.
New Jersey.
I think it's time to move.
So, I'm gonna tell you this, welcome to the crime watch.
I'm gonna make this thing what I get right now.
I'm being honest.
If that's the way it is, it's time to get out of here.
It's time for this, it's time for this town to stand up and voice their opinion.
We gotta do something.
I agree.
Because these people speeding down the road, and that's what, oh, gee, that's exactly what happened. I heard the car, I go outside, I see the guy, it looked like he's racing. Hey, uh, police had a police officer over here.
Nine times out of ten, it's somebody from that area.
That's all I'm concerned, take it, put him in jail.
I, I understand.
I mean, that's the way I feel about it.
I call the police all the time with license plates, and they keep their eye up on it.
He calls all the time, just constantly call.
I am a nag.
I'll tell you what I told the police officer. When the police officer said, I said, what if I slow down and stop it? Police officer said, why don't you pull a gun out on him? By exact words, what if I pull out a big one on him? The point I'm trying to make is, somebody needs to step up, somebody needs to make a statement, somebody needs to do something. And I'm looking at all of y'all. Looking at this young man right here, I'm looking at them gentlemen, look at me. That young lady a while ago, I might be the first one to sign up. Cause somebody gotta protect us. Somebody's got to do what is right. I mean.
I'm with you, Sam.
I, I, first thing is, thank y'all for listening, cause I'm, I'm not as hospital as I used to be. But I, I'm getting frustrated right now. We need to do something. The people in South River, all over, voicing their opinion. Again, it's in Facebook, far as I'm concerned, it's hearsay. But they wouldn't be doing that if they didn't see a problem. All right?
Thank you.
Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you.
Cause we, we need to do something. All right? Uh, obrigado.
Thank you, Mr. Luke.
Good evening again. Richard Byrne, eleven percent place. Last week, I posted a picture of the theatrical signing on the bank and posted a tongue-in-cheek sort of suspicious characters reported in the vicinity of Gully and Bank on, you know, you're from South River. Now, I've been kinda community engaging through that since I got here in twenty seventeen. And let me tell you, not a single one of my other posts came to half of the interest that that post got. And I'm, I'm like, you know, wow, we're, this is really, uh, drawn, uh, attention on, to the borough, especially from inside the borough. So a, as I understand it, the, the borough has been very accommodating with the production company. And I've already heard stories about the money being spent in this town by them. And, uh, you guys through the Police Department and Nixley, and, uh, I've been very good with the, uh, communicating the, the access disruptions that are a result of this. But I mean, from terms of saying that we are making South River business friendly, you have done an outstanding job, especially with this project right here. So, uh, hopefully this puts us on the New Jersey cinematography map and gets us more of this work and more of this business and more attention and, you know, more money coming into Velagio's and, and, uh, Dunkin' Donuts, apparently they have a tab now there and, yeah, so thi, this is wonderful, and, uh, keep up the great work. And I'm, I'm very proud to be part of this town, thanks to this, um, your, your efforts here, so, thank you.
Anyone else from public?
Furia Hill, Sixth Yates Avenue. Just to touch on what this gentleman said about the speeders. Are, right on Yates, I'm on the first part of Yates. So there are literally just two houses facing the street, there's a house on the corner of Yates and Whitehead, and there's a house on the corner of Yates and, um, Jeffrey. Speeders constantly. The majority of them attend the church at the very end. I've even gone to the church because the neighbors that actually just moved had two little kids. There are two houses not far from me with kids, and they speed constantly. I stepped out one day, kid actually happened to be a friend of my daughter's, I didn't care, doesn't matter. And he called my daughter, he's like, did your mom just like, like, take a picture of my car and stop? She's like, yeah, cause you were speeding on the street. So something does need to be done with the speeding in town, I do agree. My second point, we have nowhere to park. Like I said, that little piece of stretch, we can't fit our cars. I have two daughters that drive, my parents are there, myself. We have people from around the corner on Whitehead from the multifamilies parking on our street. We have one gentleman that, I don't know if he buys cars, fixes them and resells them, but he brings them onto Yates, he'll park right next to Jay's, the little plaza, he'll work on the cars, he'll change tires, oil, everything, until they're gone.
On the road?
On the road. And he takes up sometimes three, three spots. Our neighbors, usually in the winter, especially now we're getting the snow, so tonight, we're gonna have the whole thing lined up, even blocking the driveway, just so we can keep our cars and get back in. I know, I'm, my father told me, I don't know if it's correct, maybe the officers can tell me, I put a garbage can on my spot. My dad says we're not supposed to, I don't know if that's legal or not. It's not.
No.
Well, I just told them myself, but I have to say I don't care because when my daughter gets in, she goes to City Hall at night, by the time she gets in, or my youngest from work, ten o'clock, she's parking two blocks up. South River's not what, what it was when I grew up. So I don't trust them to walk that. You know, if I have to go out and meet her, I will, but we shouldn't have to because residents around the corner, whoever owns those multifamily houses, don't have enough parking for them, it's not my problem. You know, so we need, I don't know if it's parking permits, but when I spoke to someone about that, they said then we'd have to pay for the parking permits. How about just, why do we have to pay? And now they're looking at putting another building with like eight townhomes or whatever on that little space by the train track. Where are we gonna park?
Well, that, that area comes with its own parking, but my concern, besides the parking, is the speeders. Do you have, I mean, could you speak to Deputy Chief? He'll take your information down, that we could find out the times that they're around there, maybe we could pu, put some patrol out there?
If you, okay. Um, for the speeding.
I mean, is there a certain time?
A lot of times, it's, the church at the end, they have a lot of, they have a few services during the week. Usually, the end of the street is full, like when you're coming from, what is that, South Side? And you take that left and you kinda bear around to Yates. They have, the corners backed up, so you can't see around the corner. I mean, it, fine, go praise God, no problem with that, but like, slow down on our streets.
Right.
You know, and park in the right spaces.
Where is the multifamily house?
There are, I think there are two of them right on Whitehead, so the first house right there in the corner is not the issue, cause they have a driveway. And usually, they will help us fill up the spots, like when it's bad weather. It's the few houses after that. And the one gentleman, I think he's, it's the white one, if you want, next meeting, I can come with the, the address, um, for it, but he, the one that will work on the cars, um, he's in that building, I believe, the white building, I think there's about four families.
I believe there's an ordinance, you're not supposed to be working on a car on the street.
Yeah. It's against the law to work on cars on the street.
Yeah, so that's something I would recommend you to call as soon as possible.
Call the non-emergency number when that's happening.
Call the Police Department.
Okay.
Best thing to do.
Okay, I mean, I don't wanna get anyone.
No, 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 no.
Also, like, we need to, we need to be.
It's not gonna get fixed if the community doesn't call the Police Department.
Okay, so I will do that.
Calling non-emergency, yep.
But, um, yeah, and as far as the parking permits, I know you said the parking is taken care of for those buildings.
They're already taken care of.
But when I was at the meeting, they said there, I guess permitted two parking spaces per unit. Like me, I, there are three of us, myself and my two daughters, that's three cars. How are they gonna monitor that? Because that's lo, that little walk from Yates, right across the tracks, who's gonna stop them?
Well, which is true.
You know, so my thing is, like, what can we do about that? Like, how much a parking permit's gonna cost? Like, how are we gonna, how are we gonna do that? And is there a way that we wouldn't have to foot the bill? I mean, living there all my life, well, in that particular address here in town, eighteen years, and I have to fight for a spot in front of my house?
Yeah, makes no sense.
You know, my, age, we just got the lines painted for my parents for their handicap spot because people were parking there, even with the sign. And I did call the police on that, you know, but it's like, they, they don't care, park handicap spot or not, you know, and then they think I'm the jerk because I, I'll put a sign on the car, I don't care, move. You know?
You nail the one to the head, they don't care.
Yeah, they don't. So, you know.
We have been fighting a battle with just, Jason and I, just on ba, on parking on causeway. And when I tell you they're in our faces, they're in our faces. But we're standing up to, the law enforcement's helping, code enforcement's helping.
Okay, well, I don't know, is that illegal for me to put an O on the car?
They could consider it harassment.
Yeah. Just call the cops.
Massacre in front of my house?
You must be careful who you're dealing with. Oh, you know what? We don't want you getting hurt.
I know you can hold yourself, but.
Yeah.
So that's my only thing, and how would I go about requesting, how, what's the process for getting parking permits? Is that something we could do?
We don't, we could look into doing that, but I mean, that's some, we don't have that in that neighborhood. We do have it downtown.
Potential permit marking, but it's, it's in the ordinance and has to be approved by the Borough Council.
Mrs. H, well, we're working on it.
Okay, all right, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from, uh, public? Go ahead, Sam.
Officer Cucho, one of four O伯's Turnpike. Speeding is bad in town. The other issue I have is these super loud exhausts. They sound like shotguns going by. Is there a law for the noise decibels in them?
There is a law.
Have we, have you guys been pulling any of them over, issuing tickets? Because.
Just because somebody gets pulled over and gets a ticket for a loud.
I understand that.
Doesn't mean that they're not gonna.
Okay, because O伯's Turnpike, they sound like shotguns going off. I know you guys patrol West Brunswick, but it's, even, uh, coming up New Street the other day, cars are starting to fly down New Street now. One going up, car came down, almost hit me into that turn.
Curve.
So it's, it's all over town. So I know you guys are doing stuff, but, you know, it's, we need, maybe start putting signs up, you know, uh, slow down, you know, like print out signs, just to put something, because I feel if somebody sees something that's gonna say slow down or something, that might snap them out of their thing. I mean, I drive around town, I do no more than twenty, just in case somebody jumps out in front of me. You know, cause that's one thing I'm afraid of, kids in, you know, on the ground, but yeah, I work on the speeding in town, and I know you guys are trying to work on that now. Thank you.
Anyone else from public? First call? Second call? Third call?
Make a motion to close public?
Second.
Second.
Councilman, uh, Seola motion seconded by Councilman Krasinski. Alright, memorial appointments, uh, planning board, environmental and library board of trustees. Uh, there are all my, uh, appointments, uh, consent resolutions, Alyssa?
Whereas Resolution 2024-01 authorizes the Borough Council to utilize a consent agenda to adopt various resolutions of a routine and non-controversial nature at one time. Now therefore, bidon is hereby resolved that the below-listed resolutions are hereby adopted by the Borough Council in whole, as if the same were individually acted upon. Consent Resolutions 2024-85 to 2024-108. Eighty-five, authorizing the requisition of funds for payment to the custodian of school monies. Eighty-six, resolution authorizing an abandoned vehicle auction. Eighty-seven, authorizing of tax sale assignment. Eighty-eight, awarding a contract to CME associates for professional services. Eighty-nine, approve emergency temporary municipal budget. Ninety, authorizing the purchase of police vehicles. Ninety-one, authorizing the tax assessor to file an assessor's appeal to correct certain errors made of assessments. Ninety-two, approving a submission of a grant application with the New Jersey DCA for a local recreation improvement grant. Ninety-three, authorize certain utility refunds. Ninety-four, resolution ratifying the execution of an agreement with Twentieth Television. Ninety-five, appointment of Joseph O'Grady as a junior firefighter. Ninety-six, appointment of Kayla Lippman as a junior firefighter. Ninety-seven, appointment of Hunter J. Stephens as a junior firefighter. Ninety-eight, appoint health benefits risk manager. Ninety-nine, authorize 2024 Public Health Services interlocal agreement. One hundred, accept January twenty-second, twenty twenty-four regular meeting minutes. One oh one, accept February first, twenty twenty-four special meeting minutes. One oh two, appoint Middlesex County Urban Forestry Advisory Committee representative. One oh three, appoint zoning board of adjustment member. One oh four, resolution declaring emergency repair for fire department ladder tower. One oh five, authorize the bills and claims list. One oh six, economic division commis- economic development commission appointment. One oh seven, appointing continuity operations group for grant consulting services. One oh eight, authorizing an adjoining municipality benefits agreement with the Middlesex County Utilities Authority.
What is your motion?
Motion?
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Ballas, seconded by Councilman DeZemian.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Seola?
Yes, extension to one oh four and on one oh five, twenty-three dash zero two nine nine nine.
Councilman DeZemian?
Yes.
Councilman Kretensky?
Yes.
Councilman Krenzel?
Yes.
Council President Olivera?
Yes.
Thank you, we're gonna be, uh, there's nothing for new business, we're gonna go into governing body, uh, governing comments, after governing, governing comments, we're gonna go into executive session, nothing will be voted upon. After we get out, we will be closing a, adjourning the meeting. Uh, we'll start with Councilman, uh, Seola.
Yes, um, quick thing, um, there will be, let me get it right here, there will be a, a paper shredding event. Uh, it's sponsored by the Spiezzy Malochevsky Funeral Home. It'll be held at the Malochevsky Funeral Home on Whitehead Avenue on April the twenty-seventh, between twelve-thirty and three PM. Um, they're saying bring, bring down the garbage bags worth of documents and, uh, they will dispose of them properly with no cost and risk-free. So again, that's sponsored by the Spiezzy Malochevsky Funeral Homes, and that is April twenty-seventh, from twelve-thirty to three PM on Whitehead Avenue. And just a happy Valentine's Day to everybody. Thank you.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Uh, yes, yesterday I attended the Knights of Columbus Breakfast. Council, Councilman Krenzel's there working. It was just so good to see the town come out, it's always a great place to go because you see people that you may not have seen in a bit. And it was, it was very well attended and I thank them for that. Um, whatever the weather brings tomorrow, that's the job you want, be a weatherman or a woman. It rains, it snows, we don't know. Uh, just be careful, especially around the schools, whether they have a delayed opening or not, make sure your sidewalks are clean. In front of your house, I know, uh, the last ice storm and the snowstorm up by the school, because that's where I live, some people did not remove their ice or their snow, so there was a little slipping going on. So it is a snow street, you have to clean your sidewalks. I'm out there as soon as I can get there and, um, some of the corners were a little icy, so might wanna check them too, there was a little people sliding around. So be careful tomorrow and happy Valentine's Day. I hope you all went and got your sweethearts, whoever they are, a good present. And, uh, that's all I have.
Council, thank you, Councilman DeZemian?
Um, the only thing I'd like to say is the, uh, Neighborhood Watch Program. I think it's a fantastic idea and I wanna see that grow, really grow. Um, I'm gonna get involved with that a lot. That's it.
Councilman Krasinski?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, what I'd like to do is thank the DPW, the police department, our fire guys for, uh, all they do to keep us safe, Robert Wood Johnson. Um, also our electric department for our power outage, that seems to be a little bit of a chuckle and everything too with the raccoon and all. And I'd just like to tell the residents, please, make sure that your garbage is secured. Uh, a lot of animals just roam around these neighborhoods and everything like that too, and it's attracted to them. So if you have your cans and everything, make sure they're covered, make sure they're secure, so we are not feeding any, uh, critters to cause any more blackouts. Also, I'd like to congratulate the, uh, junior firefighters that were assigned, and that's pretty much it, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Krenzel?
Yes, I'd also like to, uh, thank, uh, everyone who helped during the, uh, power failure there, it was for about an hour. Um, and it was, uh, good that everybody got together, we were able to work there, the entire governing body was down at the power station. Uh, PSENG did get there fairly quickly and we were able to have it restored, so, uh, kudos to everyone there. We are constantly, uh, keeping an eye on things, but there are, sometimes things happen, like little critters getting inside that we can't foresee, but, uh, we are prepared as best that we can so that you do have power, especially in this time of year. Uh, I was able to attend the, uh, robotics fundraiser at Applebee's on the twenty-eighth, uh, good showing of, uh, people there. Uh, budget meeting, uh, on the seventh, uh, our council president will talk more about that. The Knights of Columbus Breakfast yesterday, uh, was, uh, well-attended, that was good. Please come to Evelina's retirement party, for no other reason, to see what the library looks like. Uh, the library is a very good, um, uh, library and it is well-functioning. And we're gonna say goodbye to Evelina, but you should also come to see where your taxpayers' dollars are going. It is quite an institution and you should take advantage of it. Um, let's see, anything else? Yes. Happy Lincoln's Birthday, Happy Valentine's Day, Happy President's Day. Thank you, that's all.
Thank you. Council President Olivera?
So, Mr. Luque and everyone that spoke, thank you guys for coming and expressing concerns. Uh, you always have great timing, you know, uh, because one of the things that we had the opportunity to do today is the Mayor's Advisory Committee on Housing and Community Development. We met before this meeting and part of the funds that we received, we will be buying light up, light up stop signs, um, for four-way intersections. Hopefully, we're gonna see how many we can get, but part of that, the funds that we receive from that grant will be going toward the stop sign, so we're really excited about that. As Chief mentioned, you know, not every police officer is on at times, sometimes I believe you guys run a crew of three. Um, and that's just the way it is, you know, I wish we can hire more officers, but budgetarily, that's not, sorry, thanks, Sal. I always get yelled at for not talking into the mic. Um, but thank you for what you guys do. Um, I know it's not easy with the hands you're dealt, especially individuals calling out sick and, and whatnot. I do believe that having the community involved with this program is gonna pay huge dividends and will really benefit the town, so I do wanna thank you guys for being innovative. Um, I know it's not a new concept, we're trying to bring something back, but I, I do think we'll be surprised by the amount of residents that get involved with this. There are a number of people that love this community, uh, everyone loves this community, you know, so I, I really hope to see, um, residents get involved and hopefully we can help out in any way possible. I know we can't write tickets, it'd be nice if we each had our own ticket book, uh, but I know that's not possible, but just thank you for everything that you guys do. Huh?
Uh, like for tonight, I would make mention that, uh, if it snows, we're gonna see snow parking, so if your car is parked on an emergency snow street and it's, it was parked there, my officers will be getting out of their cars and knocking on your door. That's just one of the things that police officers do that don't realize. If it's away from their enforcement of parking and traffic, they're out there, because people can't, don't realize that you're not supposed to park when it snows, so we have to go out there as courtesy and help people. If you can reiterate that, like, it's supposed, it's supposed to snow, and if you live on a snow or emergency street, if you can move your car off the street so the plows can come by and, and clouds can cover the curb.
Okay. And then in terms of, I know, I don't wanna take Mayor Gindi's thunder, I know he's gonna talk about not only the power outage, but also the internet, so, uh, I'm gonna pass it over to you, Mayor.
Thank you. Alright, well, before I get into that, uh, earlier in this meeting, I called Chief Tenenigan, accidentally Chief Ibe. And the reason I did that is he reminded me of when I first got onto the crime watch and Chief Ibe just happened to be the guy who put me on it. And I'll remember that, it helped the community, I was just a kid, I was in high school, but, uh, it helped the whole entire town from what he started. And I know it kept on going and died down, but here we are bringing it back, so, uh, Danielle Stone will have a lot of support coming from us and I'm sure the residents, especially this guy right here. Electrical. Um, as you all know, on February fifth, we lost electric for about one hour, the whole entire town went down. First of all, I'm gonna thank the police, the fire, the Department of Public Works, uh, all the personnel that, uh, is affiliated with the town that helped, uh, keep the town safe. Intersections were, uh, pretty much locked down, fire was already on staff, DPW was already going out and, uh, trying to assess the issue. But what you don't know was, although we posted what really happened, the reality of it is, it's better to be transparent than for me to tell you that you lost your power and we're gonna get it back. It was easier for us to say, this is the real reason why you lost your power. And unfortunately, and I had the opportunity to reach out to PSENG, I know somebody had this quote on, or this comment on, uh, social media, why can't we just put a cover over it? Why can't we put a some kind of screen? PSENG outright said, there is absolutely no way, no how you could put something that could go over, you have a live wire. A matter of fact, the common animal unfortunately that gets caught up on these wires happen to be birds. For us, it happens to be rodents. Animals, well squirrels. Last year we lost power twice, both times were because of squirrels. Uh, I'll tell you what, I can stand up for our Department of Public Works, when it comes down to our electrical department, they're top-notch. Every time we have had an issue, it has never been in this town, has something to do with either, either an accident, a pole came down, natural disasters, uh, in our case, animals. But we got on, we got on all, all possible avenues to get this thing back up. What you don't know is the hour that we spent, this is true. Thirty-five, with thirty-seven minutes it took South River Electrical Company to come up because he was on call, and he lives literally thirty-five minutes away. PSENG was right behind him at forty-two minutes. They got in there, they assessed the issue, within fifteen minutes you had your electricity on. So they did a remarkable job, one hour. We had office of, uh, sorry, we had the senior facility stopped out just to make sure that the seniors were fine, but did, we, we came together. We did an awesome job, everybody, the police, fire, everybody. And that was the truth. And there's gonna be more of this to come, not saying electricity's gonna go out, but there's gonna be a lot more transparency when it comes down to any kind of issues that happen with this town. I want people to know what exactly is happening to your town. You have the right, you're the taxpayer. Comcast, February eighth, we lost internet for twelve hours. A lot of people were blaming it on the film. Sadly, the film has their own network, they don't even tie into our facility. Comcast unfortunately is the only bidder into our town right now as we speak. No one likes to come into our town, including Verizon, why? Because it's gonna cost Verizon a lot of money just to put up poles. The, uh, accident happened on the corner of, or intersection of, uh, Route nine and thirty-five somewhere in Cereb, knocking on not only South River and knocked out several townships. And we were one of those townships. So I, I want you to understand that, we, we did everything possible on our end to call, to nag. And when I spoke to Infinity, uh, ex- uh, they pretty much said it. Call them, let them know who you are, they're gonna credit you, has nothing to do with the town. We are not responsible for your bill. Thank you. We're not even, not exclusive when it comes down to the, uh, internet, so we are trying to expand. We are going to reach out to other, uh, uh, what do you call it, internet providers and see what we could possibly do for the future, but for now, this is where we stand today. The film industry. Um, we have one more day of filming, hopefully it takes off, I know they're expecting bad weather tomorrow. They've been here for approximately almost two and a half weeks. They have done a remarkable job by reaching out to every possible avenue in this town, uh, from, uh, commercial to police, to Department of Public Works, to fire. Everything they have touched has something to do with them contributing to this town. This is what they do, this is your film industry. And soon enough, we'll have that ordinance in our, in our books, where we're gonna be film-ready. And yes, who knows, you might have more films to come and it's gonna help this town, the revenue is gonna be remarkable. So please, bear with it. This is probably the most you've ever seen on Main Street, late at night, people just standing around watching a bank at twelve a min- twelve midnight. So I thank the film industry and I definitely thank the borough of South River for, uh, um, being open-minded. Uh, tomorrow we are expecting a winter storm, please keep your cars off the road, I know it's not easy. Check on your neighbors, especially if they're elderly, uh, remember to keep your, uh, sidewalks, uh, clear. And for all you, every, everybody out there, happy Valentine's Day and enjoy your holiday. Thank you, I have nothing else, we're gonna go into executives. Huh? Can you read the executive?
Twenty twenty-four dash one oh nine, whereas section eight of chapter two thirty-one Public Law of nineteen seventy-five permits the exclusion of the general public from a meeting of the governing body under certain circumstances. And whereas the mayor and council of the borough of South River are of the opinion such circumstances presently exist, now therefore bidon is hereby resolved by the mayor and the council of the borough of South River and the county of Middlesex, the state of New Jersey, for the public be excluded upon the here and after specific subject matter and that such subject matter to be so discussed is as follows. Property acquisition, be it further resolved that such record of the above discussion be made public when confidentiality is no longer required.
Motion?
Second.
Second.
Motion by, uh, Council President Olivera, seconded by Councilwoman Ballas.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Seola?
Yes.
Councilman DeZemian?
Yes.
Councilman Kretensky?
Yes.
Councilman Krenzel?
Yes.
Council President Olivera?
Yes.
Open?
I have a motion to open.
Motion to open.
I make a motion to open?
Second.
Motion, uh, to open was Hank, uh, Councilman Hank DeZemian, seconded by Councilman, uh, Krenzel. Fall in favor?
Aye.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Excellent. Motion by Councilman, uh, Krenzel, seconded by Councilman, uh, Seola for adjournment.
Aye.
Thank you.